I call the September 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:03 PM. I'm looking for someone to, is there anything to add to the agenda tonight? Anything from council or administration?
No, but I don't have any items for council and CAO dialogue. If council has items for me, that's fine, otherwise it could be removed from the agenda.
I do have one, so we'll still do that. So I'm just looking for someone to make a motion. Counselor Wagner.
I move that council adopt the September 11th 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda as presented.
And if there's no discussion, we'll do a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. There's no delegations tonight, so we'll look for the confirmation of the meeting minutes from July 10th. I'm not sure if the order is Counselor Mitzner next?
I move that council adopt the July 10th 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented in Attachment 1.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I, I, oh, sorry. It'll be the next minute, sorry, I need to correct those ones. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? And that passes. There's no public comments tonight, so that takes us to business 6.1 Offsite Levy Bylaw. And Ethan, welcome.
Through the chairs, so this is really just for council members to ask questions of Ethan. We don't have a presentation or anything prepared.
Yes, thank you, council. Just brief overview, bylaw 2417 is an update to the current bylaw, which is approximately three years old. As master plans change, as construction costs change, it is prudent to update the offsite levy bylaw. We've hired Corvus Business Solutions to do the background report that goes along with this bylaw. The one benefit of going with Corvus's solution is it provides us with an opportunity to update in-house more regularly. My intent would be to do this every 12 to 18 months if possible. So this is the first edition of that new system. This was completed by Corvus with our direction. And then future versions of this bylaw, if accepted by council when the time is right, we would look to do some of that in-house, but also use outside expertise where necessary. So happy to field questions, answer where I can, and from there, thank you.
I know Counselor Langmaid has a few. I'd just start off with the recommendations on page 31. Ethan, you said that there would be updates kind of periodically. Will these recommendations be brought up again as well?
Yes, so council, absolutely. These recommendations were put in here based on what was discovered during the creation of this report. So we will implement these as quickly as possible. And then any of the ones that are a long-term impact or need to be readdressed as the update is, or as future updates occur, we'll absolutely take those into consideration.
So I specifically noticed recommendation number six talks about adding other offsite levies, including things like, let me just find it here. I can't see it in front of me, but it's, oh yeah, there it is. Recreation, fire, police, library, and those kinds of things. So that will be something, it looks like when I was comparing other municipalities on page 76, it looks like places like Calgary and Cochrane have already brought in those kinds of things.
Yes, so it, as noted in the, in the recommendations, that is a relatively new option for municipalities. And so in order to have a proper levy, we need to have the proper background information in terms of what we need, how much it costs, and what areas would help pay for those items. So we are internally looking at that process. We're not at a point ready where we can bring a levy to council to consider, but that's definitely something we're looking at.
Of course, thank you so much. It looks like Counselor Peterson.
Oh, thank you, Ethan. It's the same question I ask every time this comes forward. And I only ask it because tomorrow people will phone me, so you might as well answer first. And that is that will there be any exemptions or discounts available for certain types of developers? It's always the question.
My recommendation would always be no. And my recommendation for that is if we give a discount to somebody, somebody else has to pay more to cover that discount. So everything is at the discretion of council or as they delegate, but the recommendation from administration would be no.
Yeah. And then my other always question is, are there any other anticipated impacts of the offsite levy on developers or landowners other than the costs that have been included into this new bylaw?
At this time, we feel everything is all encompassing. Of course, there are development fees that we charge, but outside of that, these levies consider all of the future planned projects we have.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Langmaid.
Thank you, worship. My question this evening is around this table in Appendix G for the comparison of rates. And I just was wondering if I could hear a little bit, how, how do you think Strathmore compares to the other communities in here? Are we kind of, you know, are we similar for this, for, you know, if we broke it down by service? Are we kind of similar? Are we a little on the higher end, the lower end? And then I might have a follow-up question from there.
For sure, thanks, Counselor Langmaid. I would say we're below the average. And I understand that this list is, it does a good comparison, although it does include some municipalities which charge for other levies, which we do not have. It also compares to some municipalities which have less levies than what we have. So without going item-by-item comparison, we're definitely comparable, and I would say on the lower side of the average. So, you know, we can see here that we're lower than Chestamere, we're lower than Oketoks, we're lower than many of those other comparable-sized municipalities or in-the-region municipalities. You know, their needs may be different than ours, just based on what their infrastructure looks like. But in general, we appear to have lower levies than the average.
All right, so then the follow-up question to that, and I think I already know the answer, because I think you've already really said it, is that, that from, from your answer, I'm gathering that Strathmore is, in terms of development, rather, rather competitive when, when it comes to offsite levies, you know, we're, we're not overcharging anybody. We're, we're a good place to come and do business and have reasonable cost.
The, the whole reason why that we asked for outside assistance on creating these reports and updating these levies is to be sure that we're fair. You know, it's a third-party recommendation on how to be fair. So I, I think this report shows that, and I would agree.
Perfect, thank you very much. The other counselors actually hit my other question, so that's it.
Counselor Mitzner.
Okay, so based on our anticipated growth over the next two to five years, is low fair? And is there going to be any drawbacks to us being more affordable than some of the other communities that are strongly developing like we will be?
So when this report was created, the, the intent is to forecast what your development will be, but you also want to be conservative. This report takes into consideration that we may have to borrow money to build, to build levy projects. And so the longer that anticipates that you get the money back is the longer you would have to borrow. So it takes into the borrowing costs associated with that. On the opposite side, if your, if your development was to occur quickly and you do accrue a balance that is then gaining interest, that also gets accounted for. So by trying to balance what we anticipate to happen for development means that we're charging what we believe to be the right amount for that growth rate. Obviously, if things change in the next one to two years, we can update that growth rate, and we can update the levies accordingly. If development doesn't occur and we're not collecting the levies like we anticipated, we can do the opposite. So there's, there's many options there.
So the levies can be reviewed like on a yearly basis? They're not like tied in just project-specific?
The, the levies are updated anytime council wishes to pass a new bylaw. Under the MGA, we are required to come to council once a year and give an update on the balance of our levies, how much we've collected, how much we've spent. And we've typically done that through our annual reports. However, having this system now being able to be updated internally, my hope is that through that internal report, we can also provide council with an update and say, okay, the levies, as suggested by the system, is Y in comparison to what we're charging now, is 1%, 12%, whatever that number comes out to. And the decision can be made, is it worth coming forward with a new bylaw? Or are we comfortable with where we're at?
Okay, thank you.
That makes me think of a question. So you had said earlier, if we have groups that we have exceptions for, then ultimately that means that, you know, someone else is paying more. Isn't that true that if we keep levies on the lower range, that ultimately like current taxpayers are subsidizing future developments?
That is 100% correct. If, if we're not collecting levies that are sufficient for the projects, we can't change the cost of the project, so therefore the difference needs to be made up somewhere else, which the tax base is definitely the most likely option for that.
And so from this consultant, they're saying that this is kind of the sweet spot. It's, it should make it so that our taxpayers aren't overly subsidizing.
That is the intent, yes.
Okay. Is there any reason, maybe this is a rookie question, but is there any reason why, why we want to keep levies in the low-average sort of range? You know, we're, we're growing at a healthy rate as it is, is there?
There, there's always the belief that the higher the levies, the less development that'll occur. It'd be the opposite. If there were no levies, then the enticement for development is higher. But like you said, not having levies or having lower-than-recommended levies means somebody else or some other mechanism needs to pay for those projects to occur. Because unfortunately, when growth occurs, these projects need to be built. How they're funded is based on whether we have a levy bylaw or not.
So presumably that mechanism, then, if you were to raise levies, you would probably slow growth?
There is that potential, although being competitive with the market, with your neighboring municipalities or being below your neighboring municipalities is, I would argue, a way to maintain competitiveness or entice development in your community.
Yeah, but if that's what we want to do.
Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you. CAO?
Just a comment, there's, there's different competitiveness, competitiveness factors. So I've been talking with EcDev and Ethan, this is probably a first stage, but when you're looking at investment, there's, there's your utilities, there's your property taxes, there's your offsite levies. So we'll probably put that all together to understand our competitiveness on other things. It's not just levies, right? So, you know, if our water rates are twice the water rates of a competing, a community we're competing with investment for, obviously that's a detractor for us. So it's, this is one piece of the puzzle. We're actually going to expand it to look at other pieces of the puzzle going forward.
Yeah, that'd be most helpful, because ultimately, water rates aren't one thing, levies aren't one thing. It's the whole package, if that makes sense. Counselor Langmaid?
Thank you very much, worship. Maybe more of a comment than necessarily a question. I am interested, the next time that this comes forward in 12 to 18 months, recognizing how much work this would take, I would like to have the conversation about what it would look like to have numbers for, included for either recreation, fire, police, library, entertain, whatever that looks like. Not now, recognizing that's going to take a lot of work and not something we're ready for right now, but I think it is a prudent conversation to have us, for us, for council to have, seeing that there is a lot of growth happening. And we have had conversations about what's going to happen when, you know, we hit 15,000 and what, you know, and we pay for 90% of the RCMP costs. Do we need to look at a new building for them? Do we need to look at a new building for fire? Some of those conversations have been happening kind of in passing. And so I would like, the next time we look at this, to have a better idea of what that might look like if we included it. Thank you.
Yep, noted, thank you.
Counselor Mitzner.
So once we establish an offsite cost levy, is that per acre for all projects? Or is it, can it be changed project-specific depending on where they're developing and what our infrastructure is?
So the levy, I believe it's Appendix B, but I can double-check here. There's a map, so essentially each area of the town has been assessed based on what the needs are of that area. So the rate is different to make sure that they're only paying for the projects which apply to them. So if there is an area of town where, say, they need stormwater infrastructure, but there's less of a need for sanitary infrastructure, that's being accounted for. If the opposite is true in a different area of town, that's being accounted for. So that's why we have 11 different areas with 11 different rates, is because they're each accounting for the project specific to them and not the town as a whole.
But there's a common denominator for recreation, police for all areas?
So those ones would be different, absolutely. And that one, I don't think we've put enough work into it yet that I could say for sure how that would work, but I would envision that there's probably a flat rate for the entire development area of town. And then we would take into account what the current population of the town is and balance the two.
So you're not trying to be lower and fair to attract additional development? Because I believe we're going to attract it regardless of what our offsite cost levy is.
I, I think, apologize if I don't answer this properly. We're not, we're not adjusting the levies for any specific area of town to entice or prohibit development.
No, but to be lower than the, the surrounding communities?
At the moment, that's, that's a, I don't want to call it a fluke, but it's, the way, based on the information, we haven't adjusted anything to stay competitive or stay below our neighboring communities. Council, of course, has that choice if they choose to do so. However, the side effect, like we discussed, was if you're collecting less levies, you've got to pay for it from somewhere else. So the report and the recommendation is 100% coverage or 80%, because some will be discovered by current uses. But we have not adjusted the rates to entice development in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. And then it sounds like our administration's going to bring forward more of a full-package look, so we can see in that case if we're comparing everything together, including waters, utilities, taxes, like where we are. And so I think that'll be really helpful. If there's no more questions, thank you very much, Ethan. That brings us to business 6.2 Municipal Election Bylaw, number 2418. Welcome, Veronica.
Thank you. So Municipal Election Bylaw, number 24-18. For discussion tonight, our administration's proposed changes to the bylaw. These proposed changes are required to align the Town of Strathmore's election bylaw with the changes that the province set out this past spring. Just a note on timing as well, the new version of the bylaw would need to be signed off by council by the end of this calendar year in order to apply to the 2024, or 2025 election next year. So these are the changes that you would see in the bylaw that is in front of you. The big things are the removal to the references to the automatic vote tabulators, any associated automated materials such as counting and tally references. Those have all been removed. Everything will be manual. And then we have the addition of two references in there, as well as a new reference to the election sign bylaw, which we will also speak to, that wasn't referenced before. Just to keep all the material in one spot, so that you can find it all. And then really just some clerical updates to the order of operations, as well as just some of the terminology, just to make sure there's consistency throughout the, the bylaw now that we weren't seeing before. And the addition of the severability section. So that is really the, the changes in a nutshell that you have on the bylaw before you.
Counselor Peterson?
I, I have a prospective question, maybe for, for some of my fellow counselors or for, for anyone that, that might have input into this. But recently, I heard a very well-respected CAO of a, of a mid-size city say that never in, in his wildest dreams did he ever imagine that, that elections would not be, or that electronic counting systems had ever been found to be faulty. And so I'm wondering if, if we, if we know for our electorate what the reasoning is behind this? If there is some, you know, did, did our provincial government bring some reasoning forward to this? I haven't been able to find any. But yeah, I just don't know what the reason was for this.
I can't say I've seen any other. We're just, again, this, these updates are really just following through to, based on Bill 20.
So, so we're just following to be compliant naturally? And then this is going to cost the municipality additional money, I'm assuming?
We believe so, yeah. We also believe that voting or election results will be significantly delayed as well, so.
It'll take a lot longer?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing I was wondering, do you, and, and maybe my fellow counselors has some, some insight into it as well. Do we see this as becoming a point of discussion at the Alberta Municipalities Convention?
Through the chair, I actually believe it's a resolution.
Is it a resolution?
I believe so, yeah.
I'm ongoing, so I haven't read the latest resolution.
Yeah, I think we're discussing that next week, are we? And I believe, I did, I did see that on the list, yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Oh, my apologies, Counselor Langmaid.
Thank you. Doesn't, when we're talking about the financial implication of the changes that were required to make to the bylaw because of Bill 20, do we have any estimate on what that impact might be?
Well, we're still working through the budget, but the, the preliminary number we put, put in there as a placeholder till we understand this more is $150,000. I believe last election, the cost was 30, and, and we were going to budget 50,000 before this, so.
Holy moly, okay, that is a lot more. And then the other half of that question is?
Sorry, I stand corrected, we've put 100 in at this point, but yeah.
We're thinking we might need more. Counting by hand is going to, is going to be a significant investment of man-hours. I'm going to need a lot of either election volunteers or election workers. Do we, are we confident we've got a, a labor base that, that will come out to take on that, that much of a task?
The, I mean, the, a lot of the election is done by, by people in the community that stepped up as, step up as volunteers. I'm not sure there's much of a role for them in, in the ballot counting. We're still trying to figure this out ourselves, but definitely there could be some increased staffing resources required during the counting period there, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Those were my questions.
If there's no other comments, then we'll move on to business item 6.3 Election Sign Bylaw. Welcome back.
Hello. So with 2025 being an election year, now's the time to review all existing elections bylaws with the town, not just the other one. So we took a look at Election Sign Bylaw, number 21-19. As a note, this bylaw is same as the other. Would also need to be signed in by the end of the year for the 2025 election. The bylaw in front of you, new wording for consideration, include three new definitions. There are additions to exceptions for signage for distance from the ground. This'll help. Some additional guidelines on what content can and cannot be included in a sign, for example, the Town of Strathmore logo or vulgarity. Those were not included in any previous bylaws, so those have been added. And an addition of a section, another big one would be the reference to penalties for damages. So that was also not existing in the previous bylaw as to any consequences for any of those damages. And then again, clerical updates and addition of a severability section.
Counselor Langmaid?
Thank you, I got a couple of questions on this one, so I'll start with two and then yield the floor for a minute. In terms of the definition of an election sign, it says in here temporary physical placard. So does that only cover my little, you know, 18-by-24 chloroplast kind of election sign? Or would that cover if I wanted to rent the, you know, the billboard on the road coming into town? Would that be considered a placard?
Sorry, through the chair, it would only include that plastic kind of corrugated sign.
Okay. All right. The second kind of question I have about the bylaw is at the tip of my tongue. And it was, in terms of the application of this bylaw, for us, we, we think of it mostly municipally, but it also tends to get followed during provincial and federal elections as well. Would this also cover those election signs in town?
Sorry, through the chair, it covers provincial guidelines as well, the province of Alberta.
So the province of, so in a, in a federal election, these wouldn't need to be adhered to?
I can get back to you on that. Federal might have different provisions. But I can send you the link for the Alberta guidelines.
That would be great, thank you. Because I know that, through, through my experience in previous provincial elections, I, I know that groups are thinking that this apply, that this specific bylaw applies to them. And I wasn't sure, even in the wording, it talks in one place about municipal candidates. You know, election signs for municipal candidates may be erected up to 60 days. And I know that there's, there's rules at, at a provincial level that, that define that in a different place. But I, I just may, maybe a word show, just explaining where this applies and, and when would be helpful, especially for election volunteers who are just trying to do the right thing and maybe don't understand what guidelines they should be following.
We can bring that back.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I just get a point of clarity? So you're saying then this bylaw would not affect a provincial candidate running that's putting up signs in Strathmore?
I do not believe so. I know a couple of years back when they had the election, we had issues with provincial signs, and they needed to follow the provincial guidelines.
Okay.
So we make sure that both are monitored.
Okay, that makes sense. Second question is, I think I just heard, second clarification is, I think I just heard that this only regulates signs that are those small corrugated plastic signs. But does that mean that we don't have any regulation on like a magnet sign or a billboard or anything like that?
It eliminates those.
Oh, so those are just eliminated? So these are the, okay, that makes perfect sense. Thank you for clarifying.
It's based on the, I guess, dimensions of the sign. So if the neon signs or like the magnet signs was to be within those dimensions, then it would be included, but it would be excluded if it's outside of those dimensions in the bylaw.
Okay, I have two questions. So mine is on page 113 of our agenda package, and it's item 3.6 B. Signs cannot be placed within 30 meters of an intersection or pedestrian crossover. When I was campaigning, I found that overly cumbersome. 30 meters is a huge distance. I would prefer if that was something more like 15 meters. To take 30 big steps would often get you right into the next, well, my big steps anyway, would get me right into the next crosswalk, or it's just, it really limited the places. Does anyone have a comment on that? Okay, and then I do have one more then, and I'll pass the floor back to Counselor Langmaid. On page 117, Schedule A, it's a $200 penalty for any, basically any mistakes. Now, I think a democracy is a very good thing, and I think municipal candidates are, when they decide to run, have a lot of information to take in. I know this from experience. And the election signs bylaw is just one of those many, many things that they need to be reading. To have a first-time minimum penalty of $200 for a mistake as small as an oversized sign or the sign is placed too high, I think is just too much. So in my, in my opinion, there should be a first-time offense of something as close to zero as possible. And then any other offenses after that, I think it could be escalated to 200. But something that's a polite but firm reminder that you need to read the election sign bylaw, I think would be sufficient. $200 is, is far too much. Is there any comments or thoughts on that from the fellow counselors? Counselor Langmaid?
As someone who has accidentally put a sign where it should not go before, I have found, I've found that the approach is typically, it will be taken down. You'll be notified it's been taken down and given the reason why. And it's, the, the first offense is, I, I've never, I've never seen it anything other than an educational opportunity?
Perfect, that's exactly what it should be. I'd like it to say that in the bylaw.
Sorry, that.
And if there's no disagreement on that, then I'll direct the administration to do that. And, oh, I see, Mark?
Through the chair, you know, obviously-
Through the chair, you know, obviously it's the role of municipal enforcement. They always stress education over enforcement, so I think that kind of mirrors what Counselor Langmead has indicated. I'd have to defer to my colleagues, and maybe Kara can speak to this, but I believe our legal representatives have suggested move away from when the schedule on penalties to stick to a minimum penalty and a specific one, as opposed to first offense and second offense there. So those would be recommendations from myself. Kara, do you, can you speak to that maybe, perhaps? I know that's one thing we stress.
Any additions to that, Mark? I think it's something definitely we want to, want to spell out, and I think just to kind of echo what, what Mark has said. You know, we definitely take the educational approach first. We definitely tried to work directly with candidates last time as well, just to kind of say, you know, the sign maybe got removed and return it and that sort of thing, to kind of work through that process versus going to, you know, more of a, you know, as true enforcement perspective. I think it's just kind of there more from a perspective of if you need it.
Okay, but the minimum penalty written into our bylaw is 200, so I'd like it to be substantially less as just a polite reminder. Because it says in the bylaw 200, and it's very good, and I believe that our bylaw officers are there to educate. But nevertheless, I just want to make sure the bylaw is clear. I'm not sure how long Counselor Montgomery's hand has been up, so I'll just pass the floor to him.
Thank you, yeah, and no problem on waiting. So my question, one question I have is related to in the 3.6E. So it says like election signs must be more than 1.5 meters from any other sign, election or otherwise. But then, so I, first of all, I just want to clarify what number is intended here. Because I think in the, in the summary of changes, it says election signs must be more than two meters from any other sign, but two is scratched off in the, in the actual bylaw. So I'm just wondering what the intent was there.
The intent is 1.5, apologies for that, I see the typo here.
Now, how is it going to work as far as like, you know, somebody puts their sign out, somebody else, you know, like, let's say two candidates put their signs, you know, within a certain distance of each other? You know, and there's lots of disagreement about whose sign should be there. How is that going to be resolved?
We have not worked through with municipal enforcement at this point to come up with that plan and are still obviously open to suggestions at this point.
Okay. You know, I get that, I get that thing about like, you know, one, you know, 1.5 meters away from other signs. But why is there, I guess, I'm wondering what the logic would be behind, you know, restricting how close candidates can put their signs together?
So it is to avoid the excess clutter of 20 or 30 signs within a very small parcel of each other, as, as we have seen.
Yeah.
Recently.
Plus Counselor Montgomery, I was planning to put my signs up in front and behind yours, like mere inches away to block any view.
I'll make mine look better anyways. And then the other question I had, oh, just with regards to, you know, so 3.3, sorry. No, 3.0, sorry, no, 4.3, I'm sorry. Where it just says no person shall deface or willingly, willfully cause damage to a lawfully erected election sign. And then, you know, I went to the back, it was, I guess, like, for my first question is like, what is the penalty? Like, what is the, what law would somebody be breaking if they did that besides that bylaw?
They'd be breaking the bylaw if council decides to adopt it. It's council's purview to enact bylaws on this.
Right, but like, is it a, is it, you know, is that considered vandalism, for instance? Like, what, what law besides this would? The question, the reason why I'm asking is because we don't actually, you know, out of all the things to specify a penalty for, we don't actually specify a penalty for somebody damaging an election sign. And so I'm just wondering if that's because it's covered by, you know, the Criminal Code or something like that? Is that why, or if it's not, then, you know, I would suggest we have a penalty for that.
That can be a penalty that we look at adding, yes.
And that one probably does need a minimum of $200. I don't think you accidentally vandalized somebody else's sign.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Langmead?
Thank you, just to maybe help answer that question. Tampering with or stealing election signs is an offense under the Criminal Code of Canada and the Canada Elections Act. So nobody do that, because that is very much illegal.
Yeah, I mean, I'm aware of an election where somebody stole signs and they were charged for it, so they were caught on camera.
I just want to maybe, I just want to take us back to the definition of the election sign. Because I, I heard, I heard the answer, and then I got confused because there was a bit of a different answer. In terms of, say, so speaking of the magnet signs, like, I was asking, so what does a placard include? And we kind of landed on it, it was the chloroplast sign. But then we're talking about, the magnet signs would also count. But would, what, what, there's a lot of different types of signs. What if it's a banner that I've hung? Does that count as a placard?
If it is within the size requirement. So, I mean, I say placard is because banners are pretty hard to, I mean, I guess it would be a flag at that size to call it a banner and be the sign at the same time, because it doesn't apply to the size requirements laid out in the bylaw. So, right, when we're looking at magnetic signs, like, they are that's one, that's smaller size.
Right.
So it makes it a little bit difficult, but.
Okay.
But placard could not, it does not have to be, I guess, corrugated plastic, it could be cardboard.
I think we, I think my preference, just because I know that people can get tricky and go, well, a placard is this, this is a banner, this is not a placard. Just maybe to expand on that definition a little bit, so that it's, it's clear to everyone who's reading it what actually counts as, as a sign. Because to me, you know, by my definition, an election sign is anything that's advertising a candidate that's up for election. If it's advertised, that's a sign. You know, it doesn't matter if it's a placard, banner, magnet sign, billboard, it's a sign. So, yeah, I think just for clarity and to make sure that, you know, everyone knows the rules and it's easily understandable, that we could maybe, maybe expand on that just a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor Mitzner?
I think the size is the regulation. The material you use is irrelevant, but the size is consistent for all materials and all types.
Counselor Montgomery?
I'm sorry, I should have lowered my hand, thank you very much.
Claudette?
Yes, I just wanted to go back to your question about the provincial or federal. Yes, under Section 3 of the bylaw, it does state that federal and provincial signs can be erected the day of.
Thank you.
And also, would council like to provide clarification as to maybe like a specified penalty or minimum penalty? It's kind of like, what was?
In my preference, it would have first offense, minimum $25, you know, following offenses 200. But it sounds like administration would like to move away from that. I don't see why, because I just think a first offense is so significantly less, less intentional than any preceding offenses. So my preference would be to have a column called first offense.
Thank you, and I had one more clarification. Do you think the definition?
Sorry, Counselor Langmead has a comment on.
Sorry, Claudette, just to jump in on, on the minimum penalties. I, I hear what you're saying, Deputy Mayor, in terms of the fact that we don't, we don't want to charge someone with the maximum amount right away. And from what I'm hearing from Director Pretzlaff and from my experience, that's not something that happens. But my concern is, is that if we do make the first penalty lower and make it a nominal fee, then what you've done is said you can break that law if you have money. It, it doesn't feel like it's actually deterring anyone if you know, okay, I can break this once, and the most I'm going to get charged is $25. And I'm just not sure, not sure how I feel about that in the pit of my stomach, knowing if someone was to take that approach and go, okay. So what this is telling me is that for $25, I can put a sign anywhere. Whereas, you know, for $200, you wouldn't maybe make that same decision, even if on the first offense, they're not getting charged. That's just my thoughts around that.
So if, if administration would like to move away from that, I think then a minimum payment of $50 would be fine. But when it says minimum, does that mean then that if, if this is an ongoing problem, I guess this is directed to you, Mark, that the bylaw officers can go higher than that?
Excuse me, through the chair, this is, as I indicated, this is a recommendation from the Crown Prosecutor based on some of our other bylaws, so we've tried to be consistent in terms of that. That's why they stress the minimum would be X and the specified penalty could be Y. So typically, maybe if it's in a first offense, our bylaws officers would recommend the minimum and charge that. And if it's a repeat offense, they can do a specified one. And then if it goes, you know, to, to provincial courts or things like that, then obviously the judge can, can rule otherwise as well.
It's just some of these items on here are just so, honestly, like, we're going to be writing fines for your signs too high? I, I mean, honestly, if, if we're going to have to have a minimum, then I'd prefer to just remove the, the financial penalty altogether. And as for the idea that somebody with money can violate, well, that's always true. Somebody with money, $200 isn't, if they have enough. So whatever amount you pick, there's always a financial income bracket that could violate it and go, so what? Counselor Peterson?
So being from a family that's been involved in local politics for about three decades here, I can't, I can think of many times that people have violated the sign bylaw in its variations over the years. I, however, can't think of a single time when someone was actually prosecuted for that. If it was, I'm certainly unaware, but I don't think it has ever happened. So I, I think that in the, in fairness and consistency, in terms of how we, how we roll out all of our bylaws, that this is a good practice, this, this capacity to maintain consistency and trust in our, in the integrity of our bylaw officers to do the work that they do so well. In our last election, we had a lot of people that were participating, and we had lots of movement and construction in the downtown area. And we had lots of violations, too. I, I think Mark could probably speak to that, there were lots in our last election. And, and in every single case, I just saw bylaw, you know, asking for remediation. And so the only time I ever see that minimum penalty being imposed is when people were not willing to work with the people who are in charge of enforcement. So in, in terms of consistency with our bylaws across the board and our practices across the board, you know, I'm a person who's tried to argue my way out of the odd ticket because of ignorance, and usually never works. And I think I'm okay with that. I, I think that keeping the consistency here, no matter the stringencies, is, is just a, is just a good and welcome, consistent practice.
Cao?
What we're hearing tonight, I think what we'll do when we come back with this is we'll, we'll compile some stats from previous elections. I haven't been here for previous elections, but in other elections I've been involved in, it's exactly that, is it's an educational approach and a warning. And then it's, you know, for, if a person chooses not to heed that or, or continues to repeat or whatever at that location, then, then that's when a fine may be levied. But most candidates that I've dealt with in other elections have, have been very good about it. Some of them aren't always happy, but I've yet to come across one that has not removed their sign or, or has fought us on it or put their sign back after it's been removed or whatever. So again, Mark has emphasized, and it's no different than any other bylaw with penalties in town. We always take an education approach, and I don't know, I don't want to give a number, but I would guess 90 or 95% of the time, the educational approach achieves compliance.
Counselor Montgomery, you didn't have to ask a question after all? All right, that sounds good to me. And I guess if there's any more need for debate, we'll debate it when the bylaw comes before us as council. So if there's no other comments or questions on this, we'll move business to 6.4, Council Procedural Bylaw, Amending Bylaw, and we have Veronica.
I'm still here, yes, okay. Council Procedure Bylaw number 23-17. So that bylaw was established to have the rules and provisions to regulate the conduct of business and council meetings and committee of the whole. On July 17th of this year, at the regular council meeting, there was a request for administration to bring to the September committee of the whole, this meeting here, amendments that address having cameras on for virtual attendance and setting parameters for attending meetings virtually, specifically relating to frequency. This one's going to be too small to read, but this was the initial resolution that came forward that night. We took a look at procedure bylaws throughout the province, many of the communities. When it comes to virtual attendance specifically, it really does vary throughout the province. Some municipalities don't address it at all. There are some that are very specific to only being able to come virtually for a very small amount per year. There was 3% 25 kind of out there. There were instances where the ability to join virtually was at the discretion of the city manager. Some gave guidelines as to what constitutes a reason for joining and actually having to provide that reason. And most that we looked at had a stipulation to the rule that it has to be followed unless that there is that accommodation given by the individual appointed to that, that role. So after looking at that, what's in front of you right now are a couple of options that strike a balance between with flexibility and procedure while staying true to the intent of the original request on July 17th, which would make up a new procedure amending bylaw, which would be 24-20. I think so, if you can see, it includes a new section 10.1 that reads, "Members of council must attend at least two of the three regularly scheduled monthly meetings", which would be two regular council meetings and one committee of the whole, in person unless they receive written approval from the mayor. There is an alt to that, which actually provides additional flexibility as, and pulling that out over a year instead of over a month and being able to play with it that way. And then Section 2 is revised to say, "Councillors may attend a council meeting by means of electronic communication. Acceptable modes of electronic communication include the use of secure municipal or personal devices, smartphones, computers, et cetera, to attend via the available virtual platform. Councillors may attend via phone with the approval of the mayor if no other means are available. When attending virtually, members of council must be on camera unless the mayor or chair approves the member turning their camera off." And this is just another proposed alt that we had. You could do it differently with members of council must attend like 67%, say, or any amount that council chooses for scheduled meetings in a year, as opposed to monthly. I'm going to take it back to this one, because I think we're going to have to go here.
So in my opinion, I think one of the things that a council chamber should have is conversation. So I think of our federal parliament when they were zooming in, and the comment I often heard is, doesn't parliament mean parlay to talk? And ideally, they should be there, because there's so much going on, even outside of the official meeting, where people are just getting to know each other, small talk, conversation. So in my preference, I think councillors should be present physically as much as possible. But at the exact same time, I recognize that there needs to be, there are good reasons why councillors have to miss, and I think as much as possible, councillors should be responsible for that themselves. I don't overly love the wording of at least two out of three regular meetings per month. I would prefer if it was something like spread over a year. So if it was something like 67% of meetings in person. The reason I say that is because, let's say a councillor wanted to go on vacation, they shouldn't need the mayor's permission to go away for the month of July, for example, and then zoom in to those meetings. So my preference would be to give councillors the most flexibility possible to choose when they can and can't make it to meetings. Maybe they have no childcare for two weeks in a row, and they shouldn't have to go to the mayor to get that permission. And also, the mayor shouldn't have to be in the position of constantly trying to like police his or her councillors. So my preference would be if it said something like 67% of meetings or 75% of meetings instead of 2/3. Is there any comments on that specifically? Counselor Langmead?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I would be comfortable moving to like a 67% in a year, I think that's okay. The only concerns that kind of come up for me on that is, who's counting? Who does, who does the counting? Because it is very easy for me to look, you know, if I were to miss a few meetings in February, you know, zoom in for a few meetings in February, am I going to remember that I did that in November? Sometimes I don't remember what I had for lunch the same day that I'm asked, so, you know, I'm just, someone would need to be in charge of tracking that. I don't know who, but that should probably be included in the bylaw on, on who would be responsible for monitoring that. I, I do like, in, in one of the options, alternatives you gave, it was saying, in another community, they had to give a reason. I'm not sure that I'm, I'm too interested in pursuing the requirement to give a reason that you're attending virtually. There's a lot of reasons why someone might want to attend from a different location that day. Lots of things happen in people's lives, and I'm not sure that I'm necessarily a fan of the idea that, you know, you would have to, you know, share, share a reason on that, because it might, it might be something personal. And if the idea is just to have people attend in person more regularly, then a reason is not really changing, changing that. You're either here or not. Thank you.
I would just say to the, who's counting is that ideally, no one. Ideally, the councillor is counting, and ideally, the public is who we're accountable to. So I think it becomes no one until it becomes a concern. So at that point, if council's receiving emails from concerned citizens who are like, what's going on, at that point, I think it wouldn't be very hard to kind of backtrack and count and then deal with it. But ideally, we're responsible to our electorate, we're responsible to ourselves. It, it only is a concern when it becomes a concern, in my, in my preference. Counselor Mitzner?
So I have a question, and I guess it is a concern. I'm wondering why we're talking about being on camera when you're zooming in, and Jason, you purposely shut your camera off. Are you there?
So the reason that we looked at putting this in...
Sorry, did you want me to, like, is it, is this question and answer time between councillors now?
I guess through, through the chair, I was just asking a question, because it felt like you just turned your camera off at this specific time.
Yeah, it, it goes on and off when it's convenient. Yeah. I mean, I think it's, you know, one thing I will say, though, is I do think it's important to attend the meetings. So and I'm, I'm happy to, I guess, put my attendance against anybody else, you know, and if somebody wants to explain why they've missed so many meetings, then, I mean, this might be the time to do that.
Counselor Peterson?
So, so Chair Wiley, I, I really like what you're proposing. I think that it's really rational, it brings a, a sense of, I would like to add one thing, not just a responsibility to our electorate and our responsibility to ourselves, but also a responsibility to each other, which you referenced in your idea of the parlay. And so I do, I do appreciate it. I think that it's a good way forward. I think that it's a responsible way forward, and I think it's something that, as you said, can be easily monitored. And, and I think that in council orientations, you know, it's a good time to be able to say, this is the expectation, this is what we, what we expect of, of each other, and, and could move forward in that process.
Are there any other comments or concerns before we give this back to administration to bring back for a regular council meeting? Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. I, I do have one, and it, and it is an addition, and it relates to Section 19, 19.1 specifically under rules and responsibilities of the mayor. And I'm wondering how council would feel if, under the rules and responsibilities of the mayor and our procedural bylaws, as we're opening it up, that we would add a 19.1A Roman numeral 1 subsection, where we would reference a section of the MGA that allows the chair, the mayor, to remove a councillor for transgressions and set an action that must be met in order to return to the council in good standing. And so I think it would just be efficient, and it would be, again, one, something that is, lends responsibility to our electorate, respect to one another, and would be able to ensure that we all understood the, this idea of presiding over and preserving the order and decorum for all council meetings, which is under the rules and responsibilities of the mayor. And so it would be my request, if my fellow councillors were amenable, that, that our administration would look at this and perhaps bring back a 19.1A subsection Roman numeral 1.
Counselor Montgomery?
Yeah, so I really agree with what you were saying earlier, Counselor Wiley, or Deputy Mayor Wiley, you know, like, we, we answer to the people of Strathmore. The people of Strathmore are the people that hired us, they are our boss. They are the ones that will, in the end, decide if we've done a good job or not. And, you know, I, I think, I think sometimes, you know, members of this council lose sight about who our bosses actually are. You know, they start to get kind of bogged down in these petty games where, you know, where, where, you know, they're, they're kind of drawing divisions and they're, you know, working with their, their, you know, other members who, you know, let's say, let's say, let's say, see eye to eye with, you know, their way of doing things. And we already have, we already have kind of, you know, ways for the chair of the meeting to maintain control over the meeting. And, you know, there's, hasn't been, I mean, like, I, in my time, I've never, I mean, like, aside from I've seen, I've seen councillors lose control at times during meetings, but I've never actually seen it where the, the chair of the meeting actually had to invoke the sergeant of arms, as it were. That being said, you know, I, I think, you know, Counselor Peterson, to your, to your suggestion, you know, like, I think there'd be nothing wrong with, you know, you getting legal advice or paying for, you know, some sort of legal advice to ensure that you wouldn't be stepping on, you know, the MGA or, or violating anybody's rights, any of the electorate's rights, by barring people from attending council meetings unless, you know, they, they jump through, you know, hoops like apologies, or, you know, like extracting other sorts of, you know, things like that from people, you know, and then making them, you know, kind of, you know, express their regret, you know, or et cetera. We're, we're here to do a job, and we should act professionally. And as I said, you know, it's up to the electorate in the end to decide who did a good job and who didn't. And that's what we all need to be comfortable with in the end. And I, I don't think it's a good idea to go down the road of, you know, getting permissions, for instance, from each other, or even try to put somebody in charge as if this were a classroom or something like that. You know, is, unless, unless the rules are going to be exactly the same for everybody, you know, in which case, we'd have to come up with a policy that would kind of dictate, you know, under what circumstances can somebody, you know, violate the, the, the number of, you know, meetings that they have to attend, you know? Is, is somebody going to have to, you know, get into like the, the details of like some sort of medical, you know, crisis that they're facing, or they're going to have to, you know, maybe explain that their, you know, one of their family members is, you know, you know, undergoing some sort of like serious issue? I, I personally, I don't want to make, you know, other members of council have to explain that to me. I, we're all adults here, and, you know, most of us, you know, can understand that, I think. And so I, and I, you know, I, I, it's, yeah, let's, let's all just, you know, kind of rise above the petty squabbling if we can here, and let's not try to point fingers and, you know, and, you know, actually, what we need to do is actually get back to the business of, of, you know, running a municipality. You know, we look at our neighbor over there in Calvary, where they, it seems like there's been, you know, kind of not focused on the, the issues that matter, like, you know, making sure that the pipes in the ground are, are up to par. And, you know, here we are, opening up our procedure bylaw for, what is it, the fourth time, I think, this, this term, we hired a consultant at the beginning of this term to do a deep dive. You know, we spent, you know, what was it, two days, you know, kind of hashing this over and coming up with, you know, apparently, the last procedure bylaw just wasn't good enough, you know? So we actually, we spent money, just so everybody knows, we spent money on a consultant to, you know, to rehash all this. We already talked about this, we talked about the issue of video, we talked about the issue of, you know, like, attended meetings. And, and with the consultant, we came up with these rules, okay? And then since then, it's been reopened about three times. And you know what? I think that we should probably just, you know, get on with the business of, of governing a municipality and, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
My preference would be to not have any situation where a mayor, notice it didn't even just say, remove a councillor, but have a councillor removed until certain conditions are met. It, it puts too much pressure on the mayor to do that. It also, I think, very significantly, we have to remember, our mayor is simply the chair, who is one voting member among seven. The other thing we have to remember is that there are voters who have elected each of us to be their representative. If the situation arrives where council can remove a councillor, or the mayor can remove a councillor, we are not respecting those electors who have chosen that person, whether we like it or not. So I would not support anything that gave that kind of power to a mayor or to a council for those reasons. Counselor Langmead?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Counselor Peterson for bringing this forward, because it's something that I've thought about a few times over, over my term here. So I've done a, a little bit of looking into it, and I do know that, that there are other municipalities where this is in place. Adrian Oaktokes both have systems in place where a councillor may be expelled from the meeting for misconduct. In terms of a policy, I heard Counselor Montgomery share a concern that we'd need to develop a policy on when that would happen. We have a policy that dictates when that would happen. It's our procedure bylaw and our code of conduct. Those are the standards that we've created for ourselves and, and that we should be holding each other, too. I, I do agree that we are responsible to the electorate. We are judged every four years by the people who vote for us, and the people who review our, our conduct and, and our decision-making and, and decide whether we have earned another four years in the spot where we sit. But it's a long four years in between elections, and there, and that's quite the significant period to wait for someone to be held accountable for potential breaches of action. Right now, my concern is that the only course, the only course of action we have available to us in a case where we have one or more members of council not adhering to the bylaws and, and policies that we've agreed together that we wanted to follow, the only course of action we have in front of us is a code of conduct complaint, which can result in an external investigation and, and a significant investment of time, money, and, and things that people aren't necessarily a fan of. I do think that there is something missing in, in our procedures that allows for another Because sometimes I, I think it might, it might become necessary. And my hope is it would never be used. My hope is, is that we, you know, we'd add it, and it would become something that crumbles and turns to dust, because it just isn't something that's needed. But, but not having that option is, is challenging sometimes to hold people accountable to the rules that we have all agreed to follow and that we've passed together. So I, I would be interested in, in looking into that. I know when I was reading Adrian Oaktokes' bylaws, it's not up to the mayor alone, it's done by a vote of council. And I also, so, so it's not left up to one person to make that decision, and it's not something, the way it's written, it sounds like there's some, some warnings given first, some discussion that happens. It's not just something that gets pulled out of thin air. And I think we could, I, I think our administration would be successful in finding some wording that would capture that. It is notable that, while I hear that we are accountable to the people and, and nobody should be removed, in other chambers, this is something that occurs. In provincial and federal government chambers, people are removed for misconduct. People are named in the minutes, the speaker will rise, name them, and ask for an apology. And if no apology is given, they are expelled for the day. This is not a, a concept that's unique, that would be unique to Strathmore, this would actually be, be pretty well-aligned with practices that I see in other, in other government chambers across the country. And, yeah, those are my initial thoughts. Thank you.
If I may just follow up, Chair?
Well, I'll make, I'll just comment first.
Sure.
So there are other municipalities, and of course, the federal government, where an elected official can be removed. That I do have some problems with, but not nearly as much as the second half of that amendment, which would have said, until certain conditions are fulfilled to re-enter. And so I just, I want you to imagine that this gets passed, and you're a voter in Strathmore, and you know that a majority of your council can vote out your guy, based on their interpretation of this bylaw. That's not a good situation. That, that's, that would create an enormous amount of anger to just, what, what, what is that? That's just so frustrating. You should not have a situation where you're, the rest of your council can remove a councillor until they meet certain conditions. In that point, then, the person that you've elected isn't even allowed to come back into the chamber until he or she has fulfilled the conditions.
Counselor Wiley, that's not what I meant.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Peterson.
So, so when I, when I was speaking to, set an action to be met, I was speaking to the federal and provincial legislation, which say exactly what Counselor Langmead just articulated, and, and following the legislation that exists in other municipalities, where they, they make a determination as to how that looks. So either you apologize or you leave, you, you retract or you leave, and you come back the next day. What I'm asking my fellow councillors for here today is for our senior leadership team to do exactly what they've done with the, with the other piece of this, and to bring back to us in our procedure bylaw, some reasoned and, and legal mechanism to be able to do this. And as Counselor Langmead said, if we never had to use it, how wonderful that would be. But it, it would be equal for all people. But it would be equal for all people. It would stand for all persons. And however that rolls out, I would be willing to debate it. I just think that it is a process whereby we can be more responsible to our electorate as representatives. And I think it brings a mindfulness to the table that isn't always present in politics today. And we are all subject to that, not just one, not just two, but all seven. And I like Councillor Langmead's idea. I like the Airdrie process, what they've done. And I think that all I'm asking for is council's support to ask our administration to bring this back with the procedure bylaw. And I do want to state that, under the MGA today, you know, in terms of the legality, the chair has the ability to do this already, whether we like it or not.
Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. Councillor Peterson, can you tell me what you're referring to with Airdrie?
Councillor Montgomery asked, what are you referring to in Airdrie?
Referring to their bylaw.
Which one specifically, or what aspect of it?
Referring to the one that Councillor Langmead referenced, where she said that in the Airdrie bylaw, the mayor is not the one who makes the decision. The decision is carried out by a motion of council.
Like, which, sorry, and that's to remove a councillor, like, from attending meetings?
I don't think that that's the process. I think it's to hold accountability in the moment, I believe.
Okay, because like, I just, you know, I've just done like a little bit of kind of, you know, quick research here, and it appears to be that councils are not able to bar councillors from attending future meetings.
That's true. That is true.
If a member of council is being disruptive, then the mayor, as I mentioned earlier, can certainly have that member removed. So...
Yeah. And that's exactly what I'm asking this council to consider to become part of Section nineteen, whether it's under Section nineteen or it's under general rules or wherever it's placed. I'm just asking for that consideration to be brought into our procedural bylaw in some reasoned and rational manner.
Sorry, I thought that was in the, in our procedure bylaw, that the chair can have people removed. Is that not correct?
Councillor Montgomery, did you say you think it's already in the bylaw that the mayor can remove a councillor?
As I'm thinking of the MGA, I, you know, I thought I read something about that the chair can have the sergeant-at-arms remove members of council or the public. I'm just trying to flip through here, but I thought that was already in there, but I could be wrong.
Councillor Langmead?
Thank you, Worship. You're looking for two sixteen point three, Councillor Montgomery, in the MGA. And I just want to provide some clarification, because obviously, I'm just giving some high-level information about the bylaws that I've seen. But in the ones that I've reviewed, in no case is it that they are expelled from future meetings. It's for the remainder of the current meeting, and they are welcome to come back at the next meeting. Ones where I've seen that, you know, something about an apology, it was in, it was in the context of if they wanted to return to the same meeting. Stay in the meeting or return to the same meeting, then there could be, you know, requirements set out such as an apology or something else that council deems appropriate. And then, when that occurs, in the example I saw, it was actually a vote of council, again, to determine whether an expelled person could return after fulfilling that condition. So in no case is it, would it, in no case would it allow someone to be excluded from future meetings, as Councillor Montgomery said, for, under the MGA, that wouldn't, I don't believe, be permitted. But for the remainder of the meeting where it occurs, yes, that is something that can be done. I don't believe our procedure bylaw actually covers it. I haven't seen a reference to it in the many times that I've read through it, but it is included in the MGA as something that can be done. And, yes, thank you.
Councillor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you very much, Councillor Langmead. Yeah, like, I don't see it on a quick flip through. I thought it was maybe in a previous version, but yeah, like, I've obviously seen it in the MGA as well. I mean, there's certainly nothing wrong with having rules and decorum. You know, like I said, I've seen councilors lose control in meetings before, and, you know, and it would be nice to have, well, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, like, you know, it's obviously appropriate to be able to ask. So I'm totally, I'm totally on board with members who are out of control being asked to leave. You know, that seems fine to me.
Oh, Councillor Langmead?
Yeah, I just want to expand. Councillor Montgomery, I heard you say, "out of control." And I'm not sure entirely how that might be defined in a bylaw, to, you know, who's determining what control is. I think if I might suggest an easier metric of someone who's not following the procedure bylaw, as we've all agreed to it. I'm not sure I'd necessarily call that out of control, but I think that might be a more appropriate way to kind of word that within the bylaw, to help make it a little less objective. Sorry, subjective. Make it more objective, less subjective. Pardon me.
Councillor Wagner?
Yeah, just on this here, I mean, it's something that hopefully doesn't, it never has to be used here. But I think it is something that's good to have in there, rather than referring to Section two sixteen of the MGA, have it in our procedural bylaws. And it's something that I am, I am for, and having our senior leadership team or administration draw this up. So it is, so it is there in our procedural bylaws, and it is, it's there for anybody to be.
So from what I'm hearing, there's actually some consensus, then, that administration add an item similar to what the MGA already has, just simply reiterating that a councillor can be removed for certain violations. Are there any other comments or questions? CAO?
Just a clarification, that's what I'm hearing, but I would suggest, from some of the feedback as well, that we'll also take a look at the Airdrie bylaw. I haven't read it myself, just to see, and likewise, bring options forward, like we have with the other things, once we've looked at that one.
All right. Oh, and there's one more comment from Councillor Langmead.
Sorry, I just had a brainwave. If we can, if it's possible, can we expand it so it's not just council, but just any member in the chambers? So if we have a disturbance in the chambers, it's clear on what we can do to have somebody removed in that case as well.
Okay, yeah, we can look into that as well. I guess, one final comment from administration anyways, that we may not be bringing this back right away, or we might bring it back the next committee at hold, just because we've got some work to do here tonight, so.
Yeah, such as somebody interrupting any speech or action of councilors or any person addressing the council would be considered a violation, twenty-two point two B. All right, we have finished the business items for tonight's meeting, and Veronica, thank you for your marathon. Well, we're almost, we're almost finished, so. Number seven, question and answer period. And if there's no question and answers, we are on item eight. I'm looking for a motion.
I move that council move in camera to discuss items related to Sections twenty-one or twenty-four, one A and twenty-four, one B, I, and the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act at seven twenty-three.
If there's no discussion, I call the question.
All in favor?
All in favor, my apologies, all in favor. And that is passed. Sorry, did you say the time? Okay, that is passed.